Yeah, why don't we start? Let's start this mission. Planning Commission meeting for 22 July. Erica, could you please do a roll call and let folks know how to get in touch during the meeting?
Sure, I'll go ahead and announce the commissioners present today with us. Chair Bluth.
Here.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson.
Here.
And Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
And I went ahead and marked my Vice Chair Silva and Commissioner Latasa absent. Staff members present today, we have Principal Planner Fernando Rovary, our Principal Planner Kristi Sabdo, our Senior Associate Planner Matthew Bugger and myself Recording Secretary Erica Barrera. Information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is on this meeting's agenda, which is online at monterey.gov/agendas. Remote commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In the chamber, we recommend keeping phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with the meeting. Thank you for participating in your city government.
Thanks, Erica.
You're welcome.
So on the consent agenda, it looks like all we have is the 10 June minutes. Any comments or concerns with those?
I don't think I was there.
Okay.
I wasn't there either.
Should we defer it? Because we don't.
I was here.
You can.
We can.
Can go ahead with the item and if it doesn't receive a passing vote, it can be continued. And also, we need to take public comment first.
Right, okay. Anybody in the audience or Erica, anybody online that would like to comment on the consent agenda, which is the meeting notes from 20, from 18 June?
There is one hand raised online.
Okay.
I can go ahead and allow telephone caller ending in 902 to talk.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I wanted to comment on general public comment when that comes up.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll bring it back. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we postpone it.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Second.
Perfect. Erica, could you do a roll call vote for that?
Sure, Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Okay, the minutes have been continued.
Super. Anybody in chambers who has a comment on an item that's not on our agenda for today? Anybody online, Erica?
I can go ahead and allow telephone caller in 902 to unmute.
Good afternoon, my name is Nina Beatty. Last month, the staff presented to you and you voted on increased densification of lots, up to six units per lot. Some of this four units per lot was specified in Senate Bill 9. And the comments that were made by commissioners, several commissioners, was that your hands are tied. So after the meeting, I did some research on any challenges to SB 9. And what staff failed to tell you is that five Southern California cities sued this law, on this law, and won. The judge ruled that the law is unconstitutional as applied to charter cities and it's being appealed by the Attorney General. But right now, the situation is very fluid. So Monterey could join. I don't know what the procedure, the legal procedure is, but it could join as a party in some way. Amicus or some other possibility, it certainly could chime in with these five Southern California cities that agreed with Commissioner Dawson, but this is not good planning. And your hands are not tied. And certainly to further increase densification to six per lot, I don't know who's sitting in the wings benefiting from such a proposal, but certainly it's not people that need secure housing, that need affordable housing. Investment, real estate investment firms would, and developers would be very, very happy with this. But with our hills and narrow streets and, and the character of Monterey, this is going to completely change everything and it will not really solve any problem as far as affordable housing. One unit additional is ridiculous. I'm, I'm very, it's very alarming to me that staff misrepresented the situation to you, that there's nothing the city can do. The city absolutely can take action and the city absolutely can delay any implementation until this lawsuit is settled. And the city could assist those five Southern California cities and the other cities that are alarmed about the situation and say, this is, I can't even imagine the public safety impacts from having six lots or six units per lot on even one lot developed on the narrow streets in Monterey, New Monterey, Monterey Vista, Villa Del Monte, all the areas. This is not set up for this. And so I hope that you'll revisit this and, and revote on this and say, no, we're not going to pass these recommendations for densification to four or six units. We're going to wait for the lawsuit to take place. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Anybody else, Erica, online?
I see no other hands raised.
Great. All right, let's go to public hearing items. First one is Consider 817 Martin Street Application for H2 Historic Zoning. AMD 250174 Application, Gregory Bernard. Do we have a public, a presentation from staff?
Thank you, Chair Bluth. My name is Fernando Rovary, Principal Planner. And I will share my screen.
I can't, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Okay. As Chair Bluth mentioned, the public hearing item is for 817 Martin Street. It is a request for H2 Historic Overlay Zoning. Staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending that the City Council adopt an ordinance to rezone the property from R115 to R115H2. The city code allows rezoning of properties and the owner of 817 Martin Street requested H2 City Historic Resource Overlay Zoning to facilitate and support an associated Mills Act contract application. And in order for a rezone to occur, to allow this historic zoning, the HPC must first review it and recommend the rezone to the Planning Commission. And then the Planning Commission would recommend it to the City Council. And in order to qualify for the H2 zoning, the property needs to meet one or more national or California Register criteria for historic zoning. The HPC at a noticed hearing on July 10th did agree with the intensive survey findings that found the property to be historically significant and recommended the H2 zoning. The HPC agreed with all findings. They did have additional comments regarding the Mills Act contract application, but this application is not in, in your purview today. But I can answer any questions that you may have. 817 Martin Street is also known as the Brugiere Cottage. The property is in the Monterey Vista neighborhood, south of the Monterey High School in that neighborhood area. And it's on Martin Street. You can see it here on the screen. So in order to qualify for historic zoning, an intensive survey must be prepared by a qualified professional to find that the property meets California Register criteria. And the survey found that it meets criteria one and, sorry, two and three. Criterion two is that the resource is associated with the lives of significant persons in Monterey's history. And Mr. Seavey, who prepared the intensive survey, found that the four families that resided there between 1909 and 1969, which were the Brugiers, McCollies, Snooks and Powers, contributed collaboratively to the civic and cultural development of Monterey. The Brugiers established a 50 lot residential subdivision in the Martin Street area. And the Brugiere Cottage was the first home to be built in that subdivision. And the McCollies established the first modern hospital in the Pacheco Adobe in downtown. The Snooks had a residential construction firm and built a few homes in this residential subdivision. And the Powers are associated with the Stokes Adobe Restaurant back in the day and the, one of the founding fathers of Carmel. The resources also, also qualifies as a historic resource based on criterion three, which is a distinguishable entity whose components may lack individual distinction, but collectively exemplify mid 1910s architectural design in Monterey. The survey found that the two-story wood-framed residence, asymmetric in plan and eclectic in design reflects both the vernacular and Monterey colonial elements in its composition and detailing. The intensive survey goes into further detail about the, the character defining features of these architectural styles, but here I'm showing the vernacular on the left and the Monterey colonial style on the right. And these are the, this is seen from the back of the residence. And this is the view from the front, from Martin Street. And on the left is the Monterey colonial style, which was constructed circa 1905. There is a one-story, modern, undated addition to the right. And then 2009 garage built, a three-car garage built to the right of the addition. And so in order to qualify for the H2 zoning, the property was identified by a qualified professional to be a significant city historic resource, again, based on criteria two and three. And so staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending that the City Council rezone the property and give it historic zoning. I'm available for questions and the applicant is also here.
Any questions?
Do you have some questions? Do we have the minutes available from the HPC meeting?
They are in draft form currently. So they haven't been adopted. And so they haven't been made publicly available.
Right, I have a comment about that. I'll wait till later. Is this a new owner?
Yes.
As of?
I believe since as early as this year, but the owner can speak to that.
The, I drove by today and the part that's on your top picture that shows those facades that are historic cannot be seen from the street.
These here?
Correct.
Yes, this, this is a back view of the building. So, and then this is the front view.
The wood is prominent from the street is the garage. And then part of the building. All right, I'll hold my comment till later.
Okay. Mike? No, Mike? So Fernando, I'm just curious, is the plan eventually, if the city continues with Mills Act, to process that for this residence?
So the Mills Act procedures are under review and we're likely going to bring forth an ordinance amendment to modify the Mills Act procedures and put some more strict parameters to it. But currently, we are operating under our current historic ordinance. And this application is moving forward under our current ordinance.
For the HPC, can you tell us how they voted? Was it unanimous?
It was a unanimous approval.
Would the applicant like to make any comments or presentation? He said no.
Oh, no.
Oh, yeah, both mics were.
Could you tell us what the new parameters are?
There, so we will bring forth a draft ordinance, but for example, we may limit the number of Mills Act contracts that the city approves per year. And we may have more stricter templates for maintenance schedules. But I don't want to, that's not, those are not all of the recommended amendments. And so we can bring that forward to you at a later date.
So would you like to make a comment or presentation?
Good afternoon, my name is Greg Bernard. To answer your question, coming up on a year. So we purchased the house end of July last year, moved here from the East Coast for a job. And I think that one of the interesting things that we found about this house is just how much was unknown about it. So when we bought the house, the paperwork said it was built in 1943. There wasn't much like actual information about it. And so working with Kent to, you know, sit in the county recorder's office and pull deeds, this has just been sort of this journey of discovery. You know, to your point about the, you can't see the, the actual front of the house from the street. It's because when it was built as the only house on that street, the street was on the other side. And so you would enter the house from the other side. And so we have what we lovingly refer to as our back front door. So it's just been kind of an interesting experience, but yeah, we, you know, we love the house. We really want to help maintain the historical value of it. We don't want to do changes to it. We want to kind of rehabilitate it as best we can. And so that's why we're going through this process. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the house or about us or the process that we're going through.
Sandy, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No.
No. Mike? Mike, no? Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody in the audience have a comment on this application? Erica, anybody online?
There are no attendees online.
Okay, let's bring it back for discussion. Sandy, you want to start it off?
Yeah, I do want to start it off. And this is just, this is going to sound negative, but I hope it is positive in the long run. About two years ago, an item came up on Waiver Foam Street for a house that was virtually falling down, just a complete tumble-down check. And given the information that the PC had, that our commission had, we voted to take it off the historic register. And this irritated the people on the HPC to such an extent that I got the thought from one of my personal friends. And the city got a letter from the Chair of the HPC saying that they were trained in specific ways to evaluate the start properties, which the Planning Commission was. And at that point in time, the Planning Commission did not have the benefit of any of the notes or minutes from that HPC meeting so that they could be further informed. I think it's a good idea, also based on learnings from the City Council meeting where the suggestion was made to combine the HPC with Cultural Arts Commission. And that was turned down because HPC consists of members who are specifically trained in historic preservation. And their learnings should be passed on, in my view, to any other reviewing body. We should not be starting de novo by looking at this for the first time because we aren't trained in the same way. And so I am going to vote no, because I think that the minutes should have been provided to us so that we can see what the discussion was. Maybe somebody on the HPC had an idea that we don't know about that was not just a straight rubber stamp, this is an historic property, let's vote for it. I'm not saying it isn't. I'm just saying that the procedure should be, in my view, to provide the Planning Commission with as much information as possible. And the minutes consist of that information. So that's why I'm not going to vote for it.
Okay. Mike?
When we've done these things in the past, a lot of times it was, someone would be present to answer questions regarding the history of that research. I didn't see it today, but I, what I did read online in the, in the agenda, I felt that, okay, we're going through the same process that we've gone through in the past. So I agree with what Sandy says, but we have an established process and that's what we're dealing with right now. So I'll just leave it at that.
Mike? Well, we could continue it till the next meeting.
Well, will the minutes be accomplished by then?
I assume so. But I can't guarantee it.
The minutes for the HPC would be, if the HPC meets next time on August 14th, that's when they would approve the minutes.
Oh, so it would have to be even further out.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would have to be at the August 26th Planning Commission.
They have a history of, of not meeting for a long time.
Well, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we make the recommendation to council.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, Erica, could you do a roll call?
Sure. Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeman.
No.
And that's based on current process.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay, the next item is 841 Foam Street Use Permit Application, UP 250125 for massage establishment. Is there a staff presentation? Yes, Matthew's here.
I will share my screen. Good afternoon, my name is Matthew Bugger and I'm a Senior Associate Planner with the City of Monterey's Planning Division. Today, we're here to talk about 841 Foam Street for a massage establishment and their use permit application, UP 250125, at today's Planning Commission meeting. The staff recommendation is that the Planning Commission approve the use permit with conditions. Some background on the property, the zoning. Some background on the property, the zoning here is uh, planned community lighthouse specific plan, meaning that it will defer to the specific plan created for the lighthouse, uh, area. The general plan designation is mixed use neighborhood. The proposed use is massage therapy. There would be five massage rooms, nine tables, and a reception area. Uh, two of the rooms would be double occupancy. There would be five massage therapists, and the operating hours would be from nine thirty to nine PM. This is the lighthouse specific plan area, and the property itself is on the far left in the northwestern portion of the city. The Foam Street area. Uh, the Foam Street char- the, uh, lighthouse specific plan is cut into two character areas, one being along Foam Street and one being along Lighthouse. The Foam Street portion allows massages with the use permit. The Lighthouse area prohibits massages along it. This particular parcel touches both of them, but access would only be from the Foam Street area, and you'll see in photos later on, it can only be accessed from, from the Foam Street side. The property itself, uh, here's an aerial here, you can kinda see the, there's a parking lot on the right side, and then the building itself is more so on the Foam Street side of the property. The entrance on the bottom of the figure, there's a staircase that goes up to a public area and a rece- reception waiting room area. There are various massage rooms here, and a break room that goes out to a staircase that's inaccessible, inaccessible from the bottom floor. And Foam Street off to the right. The entrance you can see in the lower left, and then most of the actual use would be on the second story here. And the break room for employees only goes out to this outdoor area. Analysis of the project, the use does not involve an expansion of the building, and the existing trash enclosure is sufficient. The Monterey Peninsula Water Management District has confirmed that the use is appropriate, uh, in terms of water usage. And one thing about expansion of the building is that no additional parking is needed in the lighthouse specific plan area specifically. Finding number one for a use permit of three is that the proposed use must be found in accordance with the objectives of the zoning ordinance and the purpose of the zone. The lighthouse specific plan area requires a conditional use permit for massage businesses. And though the property fronts both, the entrance faces Foam Street, and a special condition is included to ensure that signage is not visible from Lighthouse. So it's very much directed towards foam. And the business would contribute to the provision of personal services for the community and visitors. Uh, this is an existing business that's in the downtown area, and they previously applied for a use permit somewhere else in the downtown, which was denied. They tried a new area which has a lower concentration of massage uses in the city. Finding number two for the use permit is that the proposed project would not be detrimental to the public, health, safety, or welfare of persons residing or working in or adjacent to the neighborhood of such a use. And that it would not be detrimental to those in the vicinity. The general plan has goals of supporting local small businesses and enhancing commercial activity. And the massage business owner is required to obtain a second separate massage establishment permit with the Monterey Police Department. Uh, I mentioned that this had been an existing use since, I believe, twenty twenty-one, but the applicant can speak to it, and there have been no issues with the police department to date. Finding number three is that the use will comply with any specific conditions, and the applicant would be required to comply with those conditions as part of the use permit approval. With that, staff's recommendation is that the planning commission approve the use permit with conditions. That concludes staff's presentation, and the applicant should be here.
Thanks, Matthew. Any questions for Matthew?
Yeah, a quick question, what's on the third floor?
That is accessible from the lighthouse side. Um, and it used to be a business that was just indicated there, and I think they just went out of business within, uh, Tuesday morning was the other side, and they went out of business within the past couple of years. I, I'm not aware of what is on the lighthouse side.
So this is just the second floor?
This is just the second floor. And access to the third floor is cut off by that staff break room area.
Mike?
Is this second floor contiguous to Lighthouse?
No, the lighthouse side, uh, appears on the first floor.
I'm sorry, I'm.
Uh, it's, you walk in on the third floor.
Okay.
From Lighthouse.
How many other massage partners we have on the, in the Lighthouse area?
With.
Why don't we wait?
Oh, hang on.
Yeah.
Sorry, one.
Yeah, you'll, you'll have an answer when the applicant can provide a presentation. So let's let Matthew answer the question, and we'll get to you, um, right after that.
The, uh, there are two other massage businesses within a five hundred foot radius to the site.
That's all I have.
Wait, let go back, so a person going to this establishment comes in through the parking lot?
Correct.
But not from Lighthouse?
Correct.
Okay.
And he is correct, it is actually on the second floor that access could be possible, but there is a building that it connects to the other building. The applicant can detail a little bit better what is on that side, but public access is not going to be possible from that other side.
Do you have a question, Mike? No.
I have another one.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Uh, Matthew, massage partners has always been a concern within the city. Uh, is there, and the intent of the lighthouse specific plan, as I recall, was to keep it in local businesses, and so that's cap- part is covered, but there were some kind of businesses that they really didn't want. And I don't know how to draw the line. Was there any, any discussion on that issue? Of the, in the lighthouse plan?
About massages specifically? Or?
And, and, and the outline of type of businesses they were encouraging versus others?
There, the portion that was excerpted has to do with providing for local and visitor. Uh, create a livable community and a revitalized destination point for residents and visitors. Um, as to the specific.
So your answer is no.
Is, I, I don't recall.
Thank you.
Specific ones.
Okay, thanks, um, Matthew, um, would the applicant like to make a presentation or, um, come up to the podium?
Property, my father, whose, whose property it is, I just wanted to clarify the, oh, Anthony Dabby. I just wanted to clarify the, the building structure. So originally, it was a, a five thousand square foot building facing Lighthouse Avenue. And then over time, there was a new, another building built on the Foam side, and that was a three-story structure, and so the middle floor of that structure, uh, touched the Lighthouse Avenue structure, so if you were to go in on Lighthouse Avenue, you could walk at one time all the way to the back and then get foam, but that's wouldn't be completely blocked off, so the, the way it will be is that back building will be the ground floor, and then the middle floor will be this tenant, and then upstairs is office space. And there'll be no way to get from one to the other, because they'll, there's a separation in the two buildings there. So you have, so the, the access to the, um, with the levels at least, Foam Street is, uh, the second floor of Foam Street is the same height as Lighthouse Avenue, that's what I was just trying to clarify. And then, um, the, the office, the space above it's been office. And so that's the current, well, it's vacant right now, but the last tenant was office, and I expect the next tenant will be office. Um, that was the only thing I wanted to clarify.
Great, thank you. Um, any, any, any other thoughts, or?
Just that this, this tenant's been looking around, they're, they were accepted in the City of Monterey, and they opened up their business in good faith in the City of Monterey, and they, they've done a, a proper business without any complaints or anything of that nature. And then because of the, the energy to provide housing, the building therein was purchased to become housing, which is great for the city, but their whole business was then displaced. And so they went to look for a new location, and they found one, and they put all the energy and effort into it, and then they find, well, the city doesn't want you to be where you are. So they had to leave that area, but a bunch of other businesses got to be there of that same use. And then the city went ahead and, and invited Massage Envy Inn to be a retail unit of the same type of business, but on a retail street, really visible, as opposed to a second floor, which is what the city prefers these be. So, so then they go and look in their city, and they, they wanna be in the City of Monterey, because that's where their business is, that's where their local customers are. Um, and so now they've come to Foam Street, which is not part of Lighthouse Avenue, and I think it's subject to a different set of desires versus Lighthouse. And this is a completely different side of the road, so, so I think they've looked around for what is the place where the city would allow them to be, and then found a building in that spot, it just seems really unfair to then tell them, like, you really aren't wanted in our city, because maybe we should just say they're not allowed in our city, and then deal with Massage Envy, et cetera.
Great, well, thank you very much. Um, anybody in chambers have any, um, comments to make on this item? Um, Erica, anybody online?
Uh, there are still no attendees online.
Okay, let's pull it back for a discussion. Um, Sandy, you wanna start again?
Sure, I, I think that the, uh, owners of this business should be thrilled to move over to Foam Street from Pacific, it, it's on Pacific now, right? Their business currently is on Pacific?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, this provides easy access, privacy, uh, seems like a win-win all the way.
Mike? Mike?
I think there's sort of no thanks.
Mm-hmm, okay, um, it sounds like a great project to me, too. Um, do we have a motion?
Sure, I move to, uh, recommend approval for use permit application UP twenty-five zero one two five for a massage establishment. And the applicant is Better Side Wellness, the owner is Anthony Dobby Trust, Lighthouse Specific Plan Planned Community.
Second?
I'll make some.
Great. Um, we have a, a motion in a second, Erica, could you please do a roll call vote?
Sure, Chair Bluth.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries, and the decision is appealable to the city council. Within ten days, we have applications online or in our planning office.
Great, congratulations, good luck with that project. Um, so the next item is a public appearance item, it is to confirm the next chair and vice chair for the planning commission. Um, is there a presentation, or do we just? Go ahead and, um, without their presence, uh, stick it to them.
Um, so, yeah, the recommendation was that Commissioner Silva serve as chair, and Commissioner Latassa serve as vice chair for the next year, but since neither of them are here.
We don't wanna seem to railroad them.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, it's up to you to, well, I think you can vote them in, or you can continue it, vote to continue to the next.
Vote for them, and then they could decide.
I think we should vote for them while they're not here, I think it makes us statement.
No, I, I think we should, I'll make a motion that we continue.
You really do think we should continue it?
I would hate to have be in that position.
Um, we do need, no. We do need to take public comments before you discuss.
Yeah.
That was pretty.
Right, okay, well, um, at that point, I mean, does anybody in chambers have a comment to make? Um, Erica, anybody online?
There are still no attendees online.
Right, um.
You're, you're more staffy than we are.
Would be fun to watch their faces, as they have to, um, get the job, so. Um, we're, we're gonna continue.
I have a question, actually.
Uh, I made the motion, which need a second.
Oh.
You wanna do that?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second.
Can I ask a question, though, before we vote?
Of course.
We are gonna be combining the ARC and the PC, and it will end up being a larger committee. And the ARC has its own chair, and Mr. Silva, if he chooses to accept, will be our chair. And how are we gonna work that out?
Uh, we, so, and we just, uh, the ARC just voted a new chair and vice chair as well in July, so it, when the committees and commissions, uh, merged, I think we will do a redo of all of that.
Yeah.
But our, um, community development director, Kim Cole, will.
Names, yeah.
Well, I think they're gonna have a meeting tomorrow.
Yes, this, hopefully this is on, can you hear me? The city council will be considering, um, giving direction on whether they really want to move forward with this combination tomorrow, and, um, I'm not sure we're gonna have a bigger group at the end of the day. Um, I think that, I, at least my suggestion would be that we somehow, um, have an application process and, um, to combine the groups, and so I, I can't, I mean, we have seven members, we have, um, at least, um, you know, commissioner, one commissioner just resigned. We have another one that's not going to seek reappointment, so we're gonna be down to five planning commissioners. And then we'll look at trying to create a process if the council directs us to do that. So join us on tomorrow.
Okay.
If you're interested.
Yeah, there was an email that came out from, I think Levi's Senate, but mentioned that there was gonna be, um, a meeting, special city council meeting tomorrow. And one of the issues is boards, commissions, and committees. And so this'll get covered by that, so, might be worth, uh, attending. Um, so, any commissioner comments in general?
No, we have.
Yes, Mike? Oh, right, I forgot. Um, Erica, could you, uh, um, do a roll call for that?
Definitely, Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Okay, now back to comments for, um, members, go ahead, Mike.
I have, uh, I have elected to, to, uh, to be, I guess, numbered off the, uh, the, this, this commission, and so, uh, I'm gonna miss you guys. I really am gonna miss you guys, and, uh, miss, miss all the fun since you. It's, it's, uh, it's been, it's been a pleasure to, to serve with, with, uh, with the staff and, and with, with my fellow commissioners. And, uh, yeah, I'm, I may, I might come, um, and, and kibbitz from the crowd.
Hope you do.
I just wanted to say that, first of all, I, I appreciate the time that you've done in the city, but particularly on its commission. It was nice having that engineer experience at a lot of these meetings that we could draw on, so I, I do wanna say thank you, so, personally.
Yes, and me as well, um, I remember when you were running for mayor. You were definitely right about Trader Joe's in that parking lot, it's definitely under capacity for the amount of activity that goes on there. Um, but, um, how many years were you on the planning mission, ten or eight?
I think it's, it's not ten, but it's, it's, it's more than eight.
Wow, that's a lot of, uh, service, well, um, as currently chair of the planning commission, I would love to pass on our thanks for all the service you provided, and um, hopefully we will see you, um, around town and here at, uh, chambers for meetings.
Up to, uh.
You're always welcome to make comments on cell towers.
Yes.
Thank you, Mike.
Don't climb that tower.
Thank you for everything, Mike is the person who got together with some other people and got me on the ARC a long time ago. And it has just been a wonderful experience, and then you graduated to pla- planning commission. And me, too, and so it's been a great continuation.
Terrific.
Gosh.
I'll miss you.
I'll miss you, too. I wish you would come and sit in the audience, provide so pithy comments that you make.
See, we have, we have a, we have a deal. Sandy and I, when we get home from a meeting, we said, gin and tonic.
True enough.
Well, we should all do that, uh, tonight.
Yeah.
Um, well, again, thank you, Mike. Um, so, um, Fernanda, do you have any, um, comments for us, or announcements?
No, um, there aren't any items scheduled for the August twelfth meeting, planning commission meeting. So as of now, we wouldn't have a meeting August twelfth.
People are on vacation.
It's getting close to school time. All right, well, thank you, we'll close this meeting down at, um, at four forty-five, thank you. Well, thanks, Mike. Well, thanks, Mike.